Good afternoon and welcome to the Board of County Commercial Transportation Budget Workshop. We're in for an exciting afternoon. Ms. Garces is gonna do a tap dance for us. No, she's not. Ms. Garces, you're recognized.
And the first lesson is turning the microphone on. So, good afternoon, Commissioners. This is the Transportation Workshop on the Transportation Program that includes a Surtax discussion as well as a request that you had to be briefed about the, what's called, the $812 million community transportation program. So today, what we will be doing is reviewing in additional detail the information and the buckets that have been identified by the Charter. John will review really kind of what those buckets consist of and what we can do with them identifying potential candidate projects. We do have lists of the candidate projects for you, which we would recommend leaving with you unless you needed to see those earlier. So we will review those. Tom Fessler will then talk about the $812 million program, its funding sources, and how those funds have been allocated and how they're coming in. You asked for two additional pieces that we recommend as part of your Budget Workshop on April 17th. And one is the piece that deals with gas tax, and the other is reconciling some of the projects that are currently funded by the transportation $812 million that might be switched and used with the Surtax money. So we think the context for those will work better with the Budget Workshop that's scheduled for April 17th. What we have before you today then is a discussion that John will engage in that really begins to show how some of the funding pots can be allocated, how some of these projects that we're choosing meet your goals and desires of whether it's evaluating Vision Zero crash data, whether it's incorporating healthy policies in all places, healthy corridors, and a whole series of other kind of prioritization framework that you have been identifying and that we have been reworking. So I think with that, I will open it up to ask John Lyons if we could to have come up and talk through where we are, where we're going, and then open it up to for discussion.
Sure. Good afternoon, Commissioners. John Lyons, Infrastructure Services Administrator. Thank you, Lucia. So, to start the presentation, some of the timeline that Lucia just covered that we will be having more of a budget discussion on April 17th, and then on June, we'll be having a workshop to submit the project list officially for your adoption into the FY20 budget. So, as a presentation overview, we want to continue to work through our smart transportation system, kind of the new programs and projects that could be funded with the Surtax, the existing transportation programs and projects in the $812 million, and a little bit on the budget discussion towards the end of the presentation. Our goals continue to be Vision Zero for roadway safety, and that's for all modes of transportation, whether it be pedestrians, bicyclists, folks in automobiles or in transit, is to really increase safety within our roadways. Take care of maintenance and vulnerability. We have a lot of maintenance needs in our system, and we will continue to work on that and get the system back to an appropriate level of service. Congestion relief, we all know that we have a lot of congestion in the county, variety of areas for different reasons, and we're gonna continue to analyze and work on that. We want health and mobility. That's important as well. And we believe that these options that we're looking at today will provide those increase in health options. You know, folks will have the ability to walk places, take bicycles, and be safer, which is a part of that as well. And incorporated with that is smart growth as well. As we move forward to implement new projects, we will continue to include active transportation options. That includes bicycles, pedestrians, and transit, and micro-mobility. Additionally, with community input, we want to continue to build on healthy corridors that include accommodations for ADA, pedestrian crossings, bicycle lanes, sidewalks, matching vehicle speeds to other corridor users. Street lighting and streetscapes is appropriate, and we can do that. The Vision Zero Initiative is collaborating to reduce fatalities and serious injuries. And the five Es for safety continue to be a priority that require collaboration. Our agency partnerships, all these principles, healthy corridors, Vision Zero, complete streets, require partnerships with numerous agencies. We have longstanding relationships and continue to partner to meet and solve problems. Our staff routinely meets with the MPO, the MPO of the school district, municipalities, law enforcement, MPO, and FDOT. We are active members of the MPO committees and coalesce as large groups on occasion to discuss larger issues that may need some policy direction. The common theme is to improve safety and mobility in Hillsborough County. We have emerging partnerships with the Veterans Affairs, the Department of Health, Innovation Place, and USF as we work through these projects. As we continue to refine those priorities, as I mentioned before, we want to look at speed mitigation. We're working to look at studies of corridors identified through the Vision Zero process principles of finding those corridors that have excessive speeds identified as causes of accidents. We continue to work with the working group at the school district who leads that effort on a monthly basis to look at safe routes to schools, walking conditions where there may be hazardous walking conditions that we want to mitigate, street lighting and other warning devices as appropriate. We're working with the Greenways and Trails Committees to fix the trail issue that we have. Historically, there's been a lack of funding, and we continue to move ahead with planning and implementation, and we'd like to provide an implementation plan next year as part of the work process to show the expanded trail network. We recognize that, based on recent experience, that a public meeting is insufficient for community participation when it comes to complete street implementation. The results in meeting with the community and desires in the platting process includes traffic shed analysis, land use, and significant stakeholder and community engagement. And so it's very important that we continue to do that through this whole process. That will take time to do that as we move ahead, but we believe we'll end up with good projects in doing that. We're doing something new. We're understanding travel patterns. As an example, with rapid growth in south counties, important to understand that not only regional travel, but local travel patterns are important to understand the mobility in lower areas. This example is some work that we have done with Cutter, and they presented this report. The middle slide shows kind of travel destinations back and forth from the Apollo Beach area. To the right of that is a proportionate graphic showing those graphs, showing those travel destinations and along with the number of trips associated with it. The top area shows that the greater portion of all the categories looked at, or all the travel destinations looked at, most of those trips within, in Apollo Beach, occur within Apollo Beach. And so that helps us to identify that then sidewalks or bicycle pedestrian paths could become a priority as we look to try to fix some of the congestion. That could help fix congestion in that area by providing those alternative mobility options through the process. And we want to continue to do that, not only in Apollo Beach, but in other areas as well. We want to refine our priorities as well, looking at trails as mobility quarters. We've mentioned this on numerous times in the past. So we want to continue to look at the connectivity and look at recommendations for mobility options, as in the example in Apollo Beach. This gives people real choices in travel. You know, it could be used for recreation, for commuting or last mile connections, or even tying, if someone wants to ride a bicycle to a Hart bus stop and be able to hop on the bus and go downtown or wherever they may go to. This also integrates health and mobility in the process as well. So we want to discuss briefly some of the new programs and projects that could be funded with the Surtax funds. This slide is actually, we provided a revised slide on this, and what we added to this slide is a 10-year summary, and it's actually FY19 through FY28, so it's kind of 10.5 years. So it's not 10 times 22 million gets to 236.5, but it shows the level of funding that would be available within the first 10 years of the program. Really looking at Surtax framework and trying to understand how these things interrelate with each other. And what we've done is to try to illustrate how that Category 2 and 3, as an example, could be used to fund things such as intersection and projects, or smart mobility technology. You know, we've always discussed that if there's an intersection improvement needed, it's typically because of not only congestion, but for their safety issues, and they kind of tie together. You know, they're not independent of each other. You know, pedestrian facilities could come out of Categories 3, 3 and 4, complete streets, corridors through all the 2, 3, and 4 as well. The remaining funds could be used for road widening, additional maintenance and safety, also network and congestion. That was kind of left off that Category 5 upside-down umbrella, or mustache, I guess it is. And then Category 1, focusing on bridge repair, resurfacing, sidewalk repair, and signal upgrades. And other general maintenance could be covered in that as well, such as potholes. But what we're really doing is trying to focus upon doing repairs, and resurface, so we don't have to fix sidewalks, or we don't have to patch potholes. It's really the condition of the system we want to get to. So, I want to pause for just a second on some of these new programs and projects. So how do we choose and prioritize projects? When it comes to resurfacing, we look at the pavement condition index. Our staff goes out, along with consultants, and we measure and inventory the condition of the pavement. And we take and consider local roads, neighborhood roads separately from the arterials and collectors. The arterials and collectors typically have the high truck traffic, higher volumes of roads, they typically are wider roads, just a different situation than a local road. And so we're evaluating that PCI, and what we want to do is a policy, right now, the policy says that the overall condition of the system needs to be a PCI of 55 or greater. The challenge with that averaging concept is that you can have a 40 and a 100, and you get to the average, but you still have a road that's in pretty bad shape. So we're looking towards, as we move ahead, to bring back a different kind of perspective on that for your concurrence, to really reset the system, that we have a minimum standard for roadway condition, and we have an overall average we want to achieve to keep the assets in good shape. But we're looking to set that there is going to be a minimum standard so we can minimize road reconstruction through that process. Intersection projects, we're looking at crashes and congestion and looking at the cost-benefit of those together, and there is a formula that's associated with it that, you know, DOT uses, MPO uses, there's some slight variance to it, but there is a mathematical formula that helps us set priorities on intersection improvements as well. Sidewalk repairs are driven, it's a countywide issue. You know, miles and miles of sidewalk have problems due to tree roots or other issues. Those are driven a lot by complaints and accidents that are reported, and so we really want to focus on getting those repaired. And there's a significant amount of sidewalk repairs that need to be done. Traffic signal repairs. In addition to implementing new technology, we have a lot of old poles out there that were designed 20, 30 years ago and don't meet current hurricane standards. They would be built differently. We want to move towards replacing those poles and upgrading technology at the same time in a lot of those intersections. We have well over 600 traffic signalized intersections that we're responsible for. Sidewalk gaps, we continue to work with the school district on setting priorities of sidewalk gaps in areas around schools, and we'll continue to do that. So this slide, we're gonna kind of go walk through the categories briefly. The maintenance and vulnerability category, we're really looking at bridge replacement, resurfacing, sidewalk, boardwalk, and trail repair and renewal, and traffic control device renewal and repair. The boxes down below really are tied back to that overall Surtax umbrella that we had presented a few slides ago. So in the next 10 years with the program funding, what we would like to do, in addition to what we've programmed today, an additional 25 bridge replacements. We're also looking at all bridges. It's a 350% increase in funding over the way that's programmed today under the $812 million program. We want to continue to look at safety and vulnerability of these projects and the network connectivity. A failed bridge breaks that connectivity in our network. We also want to look at existing projects that are funded and the timing of those within the $812 million program, and potentially look at Surtax funds to accelerate some of those replacements through the process. And that's really applicable to other categories as well. The pavement treatment program, the blue areas represent existing funded programs. The red areas are other areas that need, in general, a lot of neighborhood. We would recommend focusing additional funding, a 30% increase in funding for neighborhoods. Right now, our existing program is at about $24, $25 million a year. We focus about $5 million of that annually to neighborhoods. We would recommend increasing that to the tune of about $7 or $8 million a year out of Surtax funds to ramp up resurfacing. Reduces potholes, which increases safety. We have numerous claims for bent rims and things such as that, and so it also preserves the asset. Kind of back to the pavement condition conversation. Sidewalk repair, we talk about funding an additional 233 miles of sidewalk repair. That's in thousands of locations. Typically, a sidewalk repair are two panels, which is about eight to 10 feet of sidewalk. So every sidewalk breakage or offset that we have, we replace a couple of panels. And so this 233 miles at eight foot at a time is a lot of different locations around the county. 250% increase in funding. That would be another possible project or program that could be accelerated and with the goal of trying to complete it instead of within 10 years, say, for example, five years. This provides for improved health, safety, and walkability and accessibility in our And the sidewalk repairs are on a countywide basis as well. Our congestion, safety, and network programs, some of the things we're working on in addition to looking at individual intersections and pedestrian facilities, we're also looking heavily at smart technology, smart mobility technology. Within the program, we're looking to build a new traffic management center. Currently, the one we have now is on the 23rd floor of this building. It's kind of an old archaic system, and we're really looking to upgrade technology with that. Really having interactive, being able to interactively work with the traffic signals, monitor those, look at congestions, change signal timing. We've had conversations with fire rescue and Hart about preemption and priority devices that could be attached to either fire apparatus or buses to help move them through the system as well. We're currently lurking with TECO to evaluate smart streetlights, which could provide us additional information as well. And we've kind of taken the attitude, you know, we've heard a lot about smart city. We really think it's all about the smart county. Safe routes to schools, the two-mile zone around the schools that was brought up a few meetings ago, we're evaluating those right now. We have 52 school projects. We're looking at additional funding of 600% increase in those projects, and that's also to prove safety, walkability, and accessibility as well. As an example, since the two-mile zone was brought up a couple of weeks ago, and we provided an update last week at the staff, at the board meeting, the initial two-mile radius around every school pretty much covers everything within the urban service area. There's very few gaps in that. An initial GIS analysis shows that there's about 2,000 miles of sidewalk gaps within the urban service area. And sidewalk gaps mean a couple of different things. It could be that you don't have a sidewalk on one side of the road, but you have a sidewalk on the other side of the road, or you could have disconnects within an existing sidewalk system, whereas there's a 50-foot gap or 100-foot gap, as an example. There may be some instances where that, you know, you physically may not be able to have a sidewalk on both sides of the road. There could be a wet one, there could be railroad there. There's no reason to have the sidewalk on the same side as the rail. And so what we've done is we've looked at an example to try to manage the expectations because 2,000 miles of sidewalk construction will take a really long time and a lot of funding to accomplish. So we took an example, this is Brandon High School, and the circles represent a half-mile circle, a one-mile circle, and a two-mile circle. And what we found just from a raw GIS inventory of this is, within the two-mile circle, there's 100 miles of sidewalk gap in there, just within a two-mile circle around Brandon High School. However, if you go down to one mile, it's 27 miles of sidewalk gap. And if you go down to half a mile, it's about 25 miles of sidewalk gap. And so what that kind of indicates to us is, what's really a reasonable walking distance if we're gonna use it for schools? And maybe that makes it more manageable, and that's something we want to analyze as we move ahead with the two-mile school zone process to really understand, you know, what could we construct? Because it would be easier to construct sidewalks within half a mile of school and be able to serve more schools in a quicker amount of time than to try to build sidewalks everywhere And we would recommend further analysis on a school-by-school basis. Complete street studies, we look at additional 47 miles of complete street corridors, and these could be within some of those high vulnerability or high crash quarters that have been identified, the Vision Zero corridors, and we're looking at 800% recommended increase in funding. And that's based on the existing program again. And this will require a lot of community engagement. We want to continue to have community engagement in all cases. In the intersection projects, we would look to fund an additional 164 intersections. That could be geometric changes, it could be the addition of traffic control devices such as stop signs or traffic signals, it could be roundabouts as well. Again, these all reduce congestion, improve safety and mobility, and you stretch across numerous categories. The smart mobility technology. As an example, this year out of our operating budget, we funded about 40 signal upgrades to install emergency beacons. What we suffered through Hurricane Irma was that the power outages, traffic signals went dark. By law, you're supposed to create an outage at a traffic signal as a four-way stop. What we found was that the night of Hurricane Irma, there was no moon, and so completely dark outside, you couldn't even know, you didn't know where you're at. You didn't know you were in an intersection until you got there. And there were crashes around. So our folks came up with an idea to install solar panels and, with batteries, to put on red flashing beacons, so when the power goes out, these beacons come on and flash, and it designates it as a four-way stop at that point. And we've tested those, we've got, I think, 40 of them installed so far in the county, and we're looking at another 325 locations using the Surtax funding to do that. This will also help us support the smart mobility technology, the incident response, traffic signal retiming on the fly, we can do it remotely, transient emergency vehicle support. I spoke of the preemption and prioritization process that we could do as well. In pedestrian facilities, we're looking at additional 160 miles of new sidewalk, and this would be primarily looking at areas around schools. Again, the initial focus becomes on schools, but to increase those, elimination of sidewalk gaps through the process. Trails and bicycle facilities, we would like to program an additional 122 miles of trail corridors. This is a 1,400% increase in funding. This has really given people choices, and we just, the staff had just given me information and said, we currently have about 85 miles of trail corridors within the county, and so we would like to add another 122 in the next 10 years as well. Ultimately, the goal would be to create connectivity all the way from Pascoth County through the city of Tampa to Manatee County. The remaining funds can be used for pretty much any purpose within there. It allows for capacity improvements, enhanced safety and maintenance funding is a possibility. We need further evaluation to consider economic development, community input, and work with partner agencies, including the municipalities, to create that connectivity and mobility options. Our initial recommendations would be look at some roads that we've done PDNEs on, or we have had previous community input. So Sly Avenue, Orient Road, Gibsonton Drive, and Luteslake Farm could be potential candidates for either some enhancements or road widening as well. At this point, I'll turn it over to Tom to kind of discuss some of the existing transportation
Good afternoon, Commissioners. Tom Fessler, Management and Budget Department. I just had one slide to cover with you today, and that is, the slide that you see here is basically information that we presented to you back in 2017, early 2017, when you adopted your 10-year transportation plan. I guess the points that I wanted to make here, as you can see the different funding sources there, is that on September 8th of 2016, you adopted a 10-year policy to fund, or fund transportation. You committed $600 million over a 10-year period. About six months later, on March 1st, 2017, you formally adopted the $812 million transportation plan to cover that same period of time. The difference between the 600 and the 812 is that in addition to the $600 million included in the transportation policy, you committed $100 million, or we came up with $100 million of mobility fees that was going to help fund the plan. And then also, we chose to become a little bit more optimistic on our revenue targets. So we included another $100 million in increased revenue estimates. Basically, where we are three years into the plan is that we're doing very well as it relates to the $600 million policy. Funding to date that we've been able to achieve is about $117 million out of a target of $120. As far as mobility fees go, the budget so far to date, the early amount that we've committed is set $9.1 million out of a planned target of $9.9 million. So we're very close on those two categories. Where we're having difficulty is on the additional kind of stretch goal of $100 million. We haven't made any progress yet on the $100 million, so we're about $30 million behind on that piece. Some of the reasons for that is that we have been targeting and prioritizing some other services in the unincorporated area. We've opened up the Fishhawk Fire Station, we've added some fire emergency squad response units, new concept that we're piloting. We also have the three-year plan that we had for the impact fee offset buyback program. So there were some pretty significant dollars committed from the unincorporated area plan, or area, fund for that. That plan does come to an end, so there will be no more financial commitment after this year, plan for fiscal year '20 and the years going forward. There were some other things also, but basically, you know, if we wanted to take a look at some potential options for making up that difference going forward, some of the things that are a possibility would be, for instance, the use of some long-term debt. When you did adopt the transportation plan, your instructions at that point were that we were kind of going to go on a pay-go basis over the 10-year period. We're gonna borrow in the early years, but we were gonna pay back that short-term borrowing by the time we reached the 10-year mark. So we could choose to do some long-term debt in order to help make up for that. Some other things we could do is we could extend the life of the policy. That would also give us an opportunity to continue to commit some general fund dollars to the plan for another year or two to make up the difference. We could use some additional CIT capacity. We could remove some projects from the plan if we think some of those are not priorities anymore. Additional fuel taxes are an option, at Valorm Village, and potentially some use of the transportation Surtax dollars if we felt that was necessary. And with that, I'm available for any questions on the funding for the plan, and if there are no questions, I can turn it back over to John.
I see no questions, sir. Thank you. So only twenty more slides. Just kidding. Just kidding. So just kind of a refresher on the existing eight-hundred-and-twelve-million-dollar program. The categories are similar, but not exactly the same as the SRTAX funding, but we had a category for maintenance, a category for, we tried to correlate some of the projects and programs from the eight-twelve program into what would be considered the SRTAX program. So we have congestion, safety, and network projects, and then some capacity widening projects. And you can see the breakdown there of how it was broken down into the eight-hundred-and-twelve-million-dollar program. This next slide, the last slide, represents really just a comparison from a high level of how the eight-hundred-and-twelve million dollars was programmed in our CIP based on our analysis, board discussion, and community input. And so within those categories, it's pretty straightforward to see. Within the SRTAX, cross-blocking that again within ten years, the maintenance and vulnerability is a similar number and a similar proportion. The congestion, safety, there's a higher level of funding within that area under the SRTAX. And then the remaining SRTAX funds could be used in any category according to the charter language. And with that, that's all I have, and I'd be happy to answer any questions you may have.
Okay. Thank you, Mr. Lyons. We're going to move into a board discussion. Let me say this, a board discussion, this is a transportation budget workshop for us to discuss where, what direction we're going in. This is not a court of law. We're not here to judge the transportation SRTAX that was passed by the public. So let's not go into that, delve into that arena. This is a budget workshop. Mr. Hagan, you recognize?
Thank you, Mr. Chair. I just have a couple of comments. Maybe there's a question or two in here. I'm not sure. But part of that, are we expected to take any action today?
Action today? Not that I know of.
No, we do not believe there's any action. What we could, if I, just on that, what the next step would be is that we would bring back a first-year list for you on June first to be incorporated into your CIP, as well as some of the other projects that may be programmed out. Those would be taken from the pots that John discussed and from the kinds of projects. But clearly, as you saw, there's still some additional analysis that needs to be done and undertaken. I think the one piece of direction or insight that would be helpful is the pot that's called remaining funds, because that is discretionary, and so you have the opportunity to use that for any of the other four pots that are available, or to look at some of the projects that John mentioned and start undertaking some additional analysis and traffic shed studies for those four roadways that John mentioned. So that would be the only insight that we would ask from you today.
Mr. Hagan?
Okay, just, again, a couple of comments for whatever this is worth. I am, for one, am greatly interested in expanding and accelerating our resurfacing program. John mentioned, beginning of his comments, he referenced either a policy or percentage equation to determine or prioritize resurfacing projects. And I just want to say, from my experience, there's a significant amount of subjectivity with respect to resurfacing. And how do you distinguish between a priority-one road or a priority-two roads? And for the Commissioners that have been here a little while, at some point, we got a big list and they were prioritized. But I would drive through neighborhoods and look them up, and there'd be one road that was priority-one, and there'd be another road connected to it that's priority-two, but it looked in equally bad condition as priority-one. So, again, not an engineer, don't claim to be one, but I, from my experience, I think there's a lot of subjectivity with respect to determining the condition and prioritizing particular roads. Couple of things I want to consider, and I referenced this when I met with John and Lucia. There are certain roads in my district, and for example, Knights Griffin, McIntosh, that are very, very long roads. And maybe half of the road, three-quarters of roads, in halfway decent condition, but the remaining part of it is in god-awful condition. So maybe we should consider improving parts of roads rather than doing the entire stretch of roads. I think the goal should be to try and be as efficient as possible, and I know it's more costly to piecemeal a road here, a road there. But I think maybe whether it's intersection, a lot of times intersections will be in bad condition, but the remaining of the roads are not, or just addressing the parts of the roads that are in extremely poor condition. One question. I know that the board, we went in a different direction. I don't know if we came up with an official policy, but I remember last year, the year before, we decided to, in the past, we would prioritize collector or arterial roads over neighborhood or local roads, and we somewhat changed that a year or two ago. Did we come up with an official policy, or did we just put more funding toward the, I don't recall. Can you refresh my memory?
Yes. Initially, when we started to get the additional funding, we were looking at it system-wide. And I think that through board discussion that we did allocate, it was about twenty-five million was the total new budget under the eight-hundred-and-twelve. We allocated about twenty percent of that based on board discussion towards neighborhood projects. I think over time, you know, going in, coming out of the Go Hillsborough efforts and everything else, as we've increased staffing, increased consultant support, we found that things are probably in a little bit worse condition than what we originally thought. And so I think that's kind of exacerbating some of the comments you've made. But yes, we have allocated about twenty percent or five million dollars a year towards neighborhoods. And under this program, we would recommend not necessarily increasing all the funding on the arterials and collectors, but put a significant portion of any increased funding towards neighborhoods.
Okay. I, for one, would certainly be supportive of that. I think you're going to, I think if you would ask most residents, they would, they would, and this is not to minimize the importance of the collector or arterial roads, but I think you're going to improve the quality of life for our residents by addressing the local and neighborhood roads above the collector or arterial ones. I'll just say that I'll support any type of policy or action that will allow us to expedite improvements and free up funds to address many of our other capital needs, as was pointed out here. Many of these funds could be used for fire rescue, parks, stormwater, affordable housing, court master plan, so I support that. And then the one reference that you made caught my eye. You mentioned Sly Avenue. There's a couple of other roads, too, that you said that we had previously considered or discussed. I know with respect to Sly Avenue, that goes back years ago. And I might be the only Commissioner that was here then, but during the Transportation Task Force discussion, and I know Sly was on that. It's actually in Commissioner Miller's district. But, so can you just restate what you referenced there? I think you also mentioned remaining funds, maybe addressing some of those. Can you just restate that or make it a little more clear, at least for me?
So exactly going back to the Transportation Task Force, I believe that there are numerous corridor projects, and it kind of goes back to that slide. Let me put it back up real quickly. This slide represents a lot of LRTP projects that are in the Long Range Plan. Many of those are within the urban service area, and these are roads that are currently not programmed or funded for widening. Some of them could be enhancements, two-to-three-lane type situation, or from a two-to-four-lane type situation. The roads that I mentioned were Sly Avenue, Orient Road, which we had done a PDNE study on. And I think that went from MLK North, I think, to Hillsborough.
Hillsborough.
Hillsborough. And...
So if I could, I think Commissioner, Gibsonton Drive has been identified as a high-crash corridor.
Yes, Gibsonton Drive.
And so I think that one comes up, and I think it's been mentioned here before. Sly Avenue, Lutes Lake Fern, and Orient, I believe, have been roaming around on the list since the Transportation Task Force conversation in 2010. So they remain, they remain in the, they remain candidates for assessment and evaluation, and that's why we've identified them here as potentials for looking at with at least a shed study.
Well, only one of the four are actually in District Two, but that being said, I would certainly support whatever the next step is as far as reviewing it or studying it or whatever we have to do. Only one Commissioner's opinion here, but I would definitely be supportive of the next step with respect to that.
That's it? Mr. Hagan?
Okay.
Mr. Murphy, you recognize?
Thank you, Mr. Chair, and I'm going to feed off of Commissioner Hagan's remarks because this resurfacing is a huge issue. And I thought when we allocated the eight-hundred-and-twelve million that we were going to accelerate all the resurfacing projects and get them done within five years. Is that still the case?
The safety projects, the intersection improvements were accelerated to five years. The school projects were accelerated. The resurfacing was spread over ten years.
Okay, that was not my recollection, but, I mean, we talked about accelerating everything, actually. I thought, actually, we even talked about bonding some of the dollars so that we could get everything in the eight-hundred-and-twelve million dollars done in six and seven years. But that has not happened, correct?
That is correct.
Because, okay, so I guess that's why on the resurfacing, how we, how can we fast-track? I mean, we've got people out there. They're just livid. I get one neighborhood after another, and it's generally in the town and country area or the Ruskin community. And they're, they're just, they want, they say they paid their taxes. They want their roads repaid.
So Commissioners, I think what we're dealing with is a backlog of unsurfaced roads for years and years. Going back to the discussion about the residential streets, when resurfacing money was really tight, we did focus primarily on collectors and arterials, because those were the ones that were getting the most use. And so residential streets went unattended to for many, many years, so we're dealing with a backlog. And that's the piece that we are trying to fund as quickly as we can to get some of those residential ones. And that's why the direction to allocate a certain amount of that funding to residential was so important. And we continue to do that. What we're trying to balance now is contracting. A lot of the, all of these projects are contracted out. We're not doing them ourselves, so it's a contracting piece and then just getting the projects moving. But with the direction that we're hearing from the board on resurfacing, I think what we're going to go back and do is look at resurfacing that's in the SRTAX, because sometimes what will happen is projects that were identified in the eight-hundred-and-twelve may be in outer years, but they may have a higher priority than something that is now appearing on the list for SRTAX. So we're trying to balance those two out. But we will bring back for you then the resurfacing program that will try to move as much of this forward as we can and really commit to the resurfacing on the residential streets, which is where most folks are feeling the pain.
So on the resurfacing, how much is budgeted to complete our resurfacing projects over the next ten years?
So within, within the existing program, we're at about twenty-five million dollars a year, twenty-four, twenty-five million dollars a year. That's made up of gas tax and general fund money, the current funding for that. We can't use mobility fees or impact fees or any of that type of funding source. What we're recommending within the SRTAX is to add about another eight million dollars a year, primarily to local roads. What we'll do is we'll explore to see if we can bump that a little bit more to do that. And as Lucia mentioned, you know, at some point, we may program, let's say, forty million dollars. We may not be able to find enough contractors to do forty million dollars of work in any given year. But I would rather push the envelope a little bit and see what we can get.
So we're not intending to borrow money. I'm looking at Bonnie.
Initially, we had, the program was that we were not going to borrow. And so what we need to think about now is if we want to borrow, we can. And do we borrow beyond the ten-year period? Because we may not have sufficient revenue to cover the debt service within only a ten-year period. And remember, a few years have already passed, so we're really a few years into it already. So we only have, let's say, seven, eight years still remaining, but we could consider that going forward.
Okay. I made the statement before for the new people that we have a wonderful credit rating, triple-A, and, but we don't use it to our benefit sometimes. That it would really behoove us if we have a critical need, that we think seriously about doing this so that we can really, this is a, take away congestion. We know that's an issue. But if somebody drives down their residential street and it's paved and it's beautiful, quality-of-life issue, that means a lot to that resident. Then when they go into congestion, they're not all, you've taken away fifty percent of the steam. Yeah, they're only fifty percent mad because of congestion. So I'm just saying, if you can please come back with a plan on resurfacing, and I would say include the gas tax, include borrowing, whatever we need to do. I'd like to see some options for getting the resurfacing and really, you know, getting it done. And we're using the long-lasting materials, right?
Yes, ma'am. No surface treatment. We haven't introduced that again yet.
They use an experimental paving material. And ten, eight years later, in all of West Chase, it started to deteriorate very quickly. So unfortunate for us, you know, we have roads that look like they had, that would in maybe twenty years. And so it was really a problem. Other, one more question or a couple more. LRTP, is there, can we see that list at least once a year? I mean, maybe some others get to see it because they're on MPO, but not seeing on those. I mean, I'd really like to see the LRTP and have it presented maybe in one of our workshops, so we can see the prioritization.
Absolutely, and I think now would be a really good time to be looking at it as it's being updated. And so we will absolutely bring that back to the full board and make arrangements for the board to hear what is currently on the LRTP and a little bit about the process moving forward and...
And the tip, and what from the LRTP is on the tip?
Is moving to the tip.
Okay. Red light cameras. So there's a bill in the legislature to do away with them. Is that going to affect, how much money is that? Will that affect us if it passes?
We are checking on that. We will have to get back to you.
Probably not very much. Would it be four, five million dollars, something like that? Okay.
We will provide that answer to you.
And, you know, the city of Tampa is at the Expressway Authority Building for their monitors and their traffic, their smart mobility. Have we thought about consolidating with the city and maybe?
So we collaborate with the city and both FDOT. FDOT has their traffic management center up on McKinley Drive. City of Tampa is in the Expressway Authority Building. We're actually going to be moving out of this building and into our new hardened facility out on Columbus Drive in about a year and a half. We have interconnectivity with them, so we don't have to physically occupy the same space. And those become redundant centers, too, in case something happens, that there's conversations about redundancy as well.
Okay. And the LRTP, you have the high-growth areas, they're, are they prioritized within that LRTP?
So I believe that they're going, finishing up the population projections by area. We've additionally asked MPO to break those down into eight-year increments to kind of, instead of seeing time zero and time twenty-five, is to really see what the growth is in areas as that occurs. Our focus will be, in the next six to eight months, we'll be really looking beyond our six-year CIP, looking at that ten-to-fifteen-year horizon and really trying to identify what our priorities are. They look at it from a needs basis over twenty-five years. We need to look at it as a priority on our, in our side.
Okay. Last comment, just, if we have, if we don't have enough money to take care of all of our maintenance needs, we really have to look at the gas tax. We have to. It's... of all of our maintenance needs, we really have to look at the gas tax. We have to. It's, it's something we should have done six years ago. Thank you.
Commissioner Kemp, you recognize?
Thank you. I especially appreciate the LRTP. I, I don't think, you know, I hear complaints about redundancy at different committees, but you almost couldn't be redundant enough with me, as far as I'm concerned. Maybe I just feel like it's not a, a point of discussion when it's such a critical need. And I just don't think it gets brought, our discussions on transportation, I actually find them not in front of us enough for commensurate with the, the need. Commissioner Hagan's not here, but he might be surprised to hear how much I agree with the comments he made. I do think that we should be shifting at least some of our resources to the local end of things. I've always been pushing and pressing to the local side of things. I also, I have to say, my impression has been, when I've asked about it, that looking at road maintenance was practically a pure science, where there was 25 million a year spent every year, each and every year, on road maintenance, system preservation, as they call it. And every 17 years, roads were replaced, and that, that was not something that was an overriding issue. I think, obviously, system preservation is really extraordinarily important, not just because people are uncomfortable or it's terrible driving on the bad roads, but because of the loss in our revenue, our resources, when we don't preserve our system. Because as I understand, as the roads get more deteriorated, the fix is more expensive when you don't do the regular maintenance. So I'm all about system preservation over everything else. I mean, why, I think we have to look first at looking at what, keeping what we have in place up to a level of use that is a, a good level of use. I was also a little, I, I thought it was interesting that you explained the 50% trigger for road maintenance, and you said some places would be 40 on the road, and some places 100%. And I think my mind traveled to the same place that Commissioner Hagan's did, that, how does that work? Because sometimes you have really long roads. So if you calculate in this long road, and a portion of it is poor, and another portion of it is in excellent shape, it wouldn't make sense to me to do that. I would just think that you would do it, and whatever would, would be sensible, quarter mile, half mile. So I, I would just, that, to me, would be the, that doesn't sound like the most efficient system, as you put it out there, to me, in terms of identifying necessary repairs.
So I think a couple of things, just a little bit of history. So in 2008, when the economy tanked, our resurfacing program for about an eight-year period was somewhere in the neighborhood of about $10 to $12 million a year. We probably had a need of at least $20 million at that time, so we got way far behind. And in 2017, with the additional funding, we went from about $12 to $14 million up to about $25 million. So we're behind, and it's gonna take a while to get caught up. And the 812 program was a matter, matter of balancing a bucket of money to all the needs that we have. And so we go through that. With regard to how the pavement is inspected, it is broken down into a segment, segmented type of process, and it could be they're aggregated to, to longer segments. One thing that we do is that if you go into a neighborhood, for example, and it's got 10 parallel streets, you may have some roads that are in significantly better shape, or maybe not significantly better shape. When we go into a neighborhood, we're doing the whole neighborhood, because we don't need that grief. But you paved this street, but you didn't pave that street.
Right.
We don't need that grief. We know that you all don't want that grief. So there's gonna be chant, times that we may resurface a road that's not quite ready yet, but it does save a mobilization cost to having to go back into that neighborhood. It keeps the neighborhood happy, keeps everybody happy, and we move on to the next project. So it's a balancing act. But where we wanna get to is to a steady state, be able to say, we're in good shape, and we can respond to that. Because we get to that steady state, pothole complaints will, should fall off the edge of the earth. We should never, or hardly ever, hear about a pothole complaint.
I think I was thinking more about arterial and collectors when I was making that comment, rather than the neighborhood roads, but I appreciate that. A couple other things are just, talked about pole replacement with lighting. And, you know, I just read the other day in The Times, there was an article about undergrounding cables. I know you're just talking, you're talking about traffic signals. But I just wonder, as we're doing this too, if we shouldn't be thinking about that, at least on some arterial roads, some of the main roads, that we're doing for resiliency purposes, despite anything I've heard. I know that MacDill has undergrounded everything, and I don't think they would agree that it's not a move for resiliency. And so I would really like to see at least that possibility. I know that it requires coordination, but if we're digging up an area, a stormwater, whatever, that, that should at least be part of what we look at, at least on the main roads. And so I'm just, I don't know how that gets incorporated, but I think that that's important, just not for visuals, but for resiliency and for our future. And so I'd like to have that also be part of it. I'd just like to say that the Apollo Beach graphic that I saw, I know that Commissioner Overman said, I know you like those graphics like that. It's up the front here, which I do. And yes, thank you. I, I would love to see more of that done, as, as I know that Ms. Garcis knows that I've asked, so that's great. The one thing I don't see in there, which I can imagine, because, because of the workshops down in South County, that many residents, when they were asking about transit, had said that they were really interested in having transit to Tampa. And so it doesn't go that far. And I'd also, is this a commuter, or is this just general use?
Commissioners, it is based on an origin destination study that Cutter is doing. So they're actually asking people where they travel to and looking at travel patterns. So in response to your question, which I think is where are people going and are they trying to get to Tampa? That's not to say they're not trying to get to Tampa, but where is the focus of their travel?
Oh, and I really appreciate that, because I do believe and have talked about the emphasis of people not actually leaving their community and us having to worry about not this huge region, where 91% of the time in Hillsborough County, if somebody turns a key to a car, they end up in Hillsborough County, it, for their jobs. That's the commuter numbers. And so I really can appreciate this. And I didn't think that you were saying nobody goes to Tampa, but I was just like wondering about the, the length of that. And I do appreciate that, you know, so often, people do wanna find those resources, whether it be a job or the grocery store, whatever, in their community. They do not wanna be taking these long runs to get to anything.
And so, you know, with that, the, the Cutter study that was done on origin destination is really fascinating, because it does show, it actually does provide numbers of how many people leave their community to go to different places, whether it's north or south. And I'm just thinking of how we get that in front of you, because at some point, it is the kind of data that we really haven't been collecting. We've been doing it on a regional basis, but to really drill down and understand commute patterns, which then opens the door for us to start thinking about bicycle options and other pedestrian options, because people aren't traveling that far. It's really mostly to work and back, and that's, of all trips, that's less than 30%. So I'm just trying to sort out it, but I think that would be a good thing to get in front of you as well. And maybe it's tied with LRTP. And so when we bring LRTP back, it really starts talking about different travel patterns. But yes, it will...
And, and also automotive options, cars, you know, as well, and what we're looking at for that. And finally, I just, one, one of the, I know, one of the streets I named when asked was Sly Avenue. So, and I'm not, you know, I, I know that I've heard at least about Orient Road and Gibsonton Drive as being issues. So I'd just like to say, I hope we hear just more particularly about this. Those priorities are like fine by me just as a fast list. But I think, especially with, you know, even when the 812 million, which I was a no vote on, but even with that, there, the specific projects weren't really well laid out during that presentation. And since then, we've got now two new commissioners. So that's three of us who haven't really been specifically through those projects. And also my, to my memory, and I could be wrong, but I remember them, I remember it saying that they were not gonna be bonding anything at all, pretty much on a pay-as-you-go basis. And I thought that it was the safety projects and the school projects, the first 300 million, that was the accelerated piece of it to my, to my mind, not to, but I just, that's what I understood that to be. So I, and even in the first three years, just the PDNE, because it was the lower numbers. But that's just a fast memory, not necessarily an accurate one. But so, you know, and I, I just wanted to say, I feel comfortable with a lot of this as a, as a general framework in moving forward or explanation.
Commissioner Overman, you recognize?
Thank you very much for a lot of very good information. I would like to see an overlay on slide 24, slide 23, slide 20, and slide 18 and 17. All of those slides seem to suggest that there are core areas that are in need of all of the issues described on those specific slides. So if we are finding ourselves in a situation where accelerating any of these projects requires bonding, given that it makes no sense to start a project and then have to do it again, over again, because it wasn't in the right list, the right order to address all of these concerns, seems challenging to me, especially in a relatively low interest rate. If having the resources upfront to address, what, six slides of concerns that we have as it relates to our county roads and communities, specifically those that are not really what I would consider optional, for example, the safe routes to school. You know, we clearly need to make a commitment to our children and our communities to make sure that our children are getting to school safely when we've adopted a policy that they must walk if they're two miles away. And I recognize that focusing on the half a mile and then, you know, one mile makes it easier. But if, if we're not doing that, and also taking into consideration the high density of, on page 18, of the sidewalks, or the 233 miles of sidewalk repairs seem to have a real correlation with a lot of the side, of the two-mile work that we need to do for safe routes to school, as well as the smart mobility technology investments that we're considering. Granted, all of those things cost a lot of money to do, and it takes a lot of planning to do them all. But I, I think it's critically important that we really look at how we go about attacking this. Granted, it's a, it's a mammoth project management task. I, that I'm not, that's not lost on me. To coordinate all four of those areas, or five of those areas at the same time to manage the projects, and the RFPs, and the procurement, and everything else that goes along with it, I, I recognize that's a lot. But I also recognize there's value in getting things done quickly. There's value in not having a road that we just did construction on last week to do again in a year from now, because we need to now put bike lanes or trails associated with those, when they're, when they're in the same area that need, we need to address sidewalks, school safety, and light or mobility issues to help people get around efficiently and effectively. It's, it's a mammoth project, I get that. But if it's, if, if money is the issue of why we're spreading it out over time, then it's beholden to us to really look at the conversation we will be having in the next several weeks when it comes to impact fees and other fees, our stormwater fees, impact fees, mobility fees, gas tax, all of the above, to look at how our community has already been permitted and where it's going to grow, but it's not there yet. Because if we don't get good at dealing with what we already have to deal with as a bit of a mess because we ran into a recession and suddenly didn't have the funds, we're not gonna solve ourselves out of that problem reoccurring, should we go into a potential recession down the road. And when we find ourselves in a situation where interest rates are as low as they are now, as they are very, very low as compared to history, I think it is important that we become, you know, very, use a very strong financial plan to accomplish this transportation growth plan. Both the use of the 800 million that we've identified for the next 10 years, as well as effectively utilizing the SRTAX. Because we also have, around the revenues we've got coming in with the SRTAX, we have also to partner with our other, you know, entities. The city of, I don't see city of Tampa roads in here that are county-owned, on any of these illustrations. May have missed it, it's possible. But we do have, you know, roads that are county roads within the city limits that do not appear on here that I can see. So, and I will tell you, they are terrible. You know, there is no part of Colum- Columbus Avenue or Columbus Drive right now that is even ridiculously remotely close to being drivable in a safe way. It's a disaster zone. And it's ripping up cars every single day. So, you know, we all have our priority road, but I think it's important to really look at, we've got several slides here that, where we show needs. And I'd really like to get an idea of what that kind of capital would take, respecting our, you know, our staff's ability to plan for all of these and manage financially the process and procurement at the same time. Because we have an opportunity to get this right. Or just keep spending money in different places at different times and not really using our tax dollars as well as I'd like to see. And I'm sure a few others would like to see. So I, that was my first observation. The, you know, we're all, on page 24, we're talking about smart mobility. All those red dots are right where, you know, our sidewalk needs to be replaced, where our congestion problems exist, where our pavement retreatment centers are. I mean, they're all clustered together. So let's do them all at the same time, if we can. And so I'd like to explore where, how we could go about doing that, whether it be, you know, a bonding issue or a procurement plan. But I think it's critically important that we use our resources as best we can by coordinating the projects as well as we can. The, the only other thing that we will need to address at some point in time is coordinating the arterial collector road plan with HART. Because if we don't pay, pay attention to the road structure that HART's gonna use to expand its transit network, all this resurfacing is gonna end up having to be redone later on down the road to provide protected guideways for those key corridors that are gonna help the folks that live in these congested areas, or for example, the folks that live in Apollo Beach, as you mentioned, who do wanna go to other parts of our county for their job centers. So I, that's the one piece I'm not seeing. I'm sure it's embedded in here somewhere. But I do think it's critically important that we respect the fact that we have a significant investment coming in the way of transit, and we wanna make sure that our road networks and our communities are able to access that, and we don't end up redoing it, because all of a sudden, we now have a, a transit corridor or a transit node, if you wanna use that word, as part of our plan. I know that a lot of that is being embedded in the tip and the LRTP, which I think will, when we see that, we'll be able to identify some of those areas. But I, I do think it would be a good idea to overlay those slides and see where we can find some project management, and estimate what the capital cost would be to take care of that if we did it over a five or 10-year period, and preferably five. So, thank you.
Commissioner Smith, you recognize?
Just a couple of quick points about the bike trails and bike corridors, trails and bicycle facilities. On slide number 26, you see the green corridors, and those are the ones that are done already. And I, I think you said 85 miles are done already?
I believe so, yes.
And, and so looking at this, you can see that it's gotta be 50 mi, if that, if the green trails are... are 85 miles, then 50 miles of them at least are up in the Morris Bridge area, up in the kind of top north part of it. And those are great. I've bicycled those many times before. But what I really like is seeing these red trails that we're going to do, because I think that they provide a lot more real transportation option compared to the Morris Bridge Trail Network that is more about recreation. And so I'm excited to see those red trails. Also, you might notice that the green trails are almost, very precious little, done south of 60, just one little stripe on 301. So I'm excited to see some alternative transportation coming to South County where the growth is, and where those trips can, you know, in the Apollo Beach area, for example, can be translated into alternative transportation. Very excited to see that. But I am reminded, as Commissioner Overman was talking about, a time that I was seeing Shell Point Road get resurfaced, and as a constituent, I was calling my commissioner's office and saying, that road is supposed to have an important piece of the Greenway Trail side path that is eventually going to connect Shell Point and 19th with, you know, all these parks and beach amenities to this red South Coast Greenway Trail. Why aren't you doing that at the same time you're doing the resurfacing? So, you know, I am hoping that the side path, the network of actual getting me to the post office and the grocery store, even the doctor's office kinds of trails, even commute, not my personal commute, but other people's commute.
Your commute's hard.
Right. Can be done with, at the same time that we're doing these roadway capacity, road widening. I mean, I assume that the road widening that we're doing on 19th would coincide with the bike trail we're doing on 19th Avenue, as well as possibly some of the resurfacing projects, so.
That is another way that we're looking at trails, and whether it's Big Bend, that's the other one, we're looking at Big Bend. Gibsonton would be a good candidate for that. So looking at all of those and 19th Avenue, as we look at the PD and E on that. So there's a trail connecting to a trail, instead of, just as you said, the recreational piece up in, near Morris Bridge.
And in addition to these bona fide trails, then the grid of by, safe cycling infrastructure side paths that can get everybody to transit options and the grid. Hopefully, sometime we'll see bike trails to the ferry, connecting people to this ferry option, because if this ferry is going from South County to St. Pete and Tampa for, well, Tampa and St. Pete both have fabulous bicycle facilities, so really safe, separated from the streets. Tampa is getting there, St. Pete is eating our lunch in that regard, but hopefully Tampa will be catching up now that we have the money for it, and the ferries can take your bicycle there, and you'll be good to go. Thank you.
Commissioner Hagan, you recognize?
Thank you. I just wanted to thank Commissioner Kemp for her comments. I was in the back room, but I was listening, so thank you, I appreciate that. And one question to John. Where do shoulder improvements fit in there? They're not potholes, not resurfacing. Is that in the maintenance and vulnerability bucket? Is it pavement treatment, or is it a separate area?
It's shoulder treatment, it's within resurfacing, the maintenance. So it's within the maintenance bucket. We used to have a separate shoulder treatment, CIP, and what we've tried to do is incorporate on a road widening where we can. If it's a rural road, is to add that shoulder treatment on to widen those, to try to create a little bit of a bike path, separate from the roadway.
Okay.
Does that answer your question?
Sort of. I know there are many roads out there that, again, it's not really a pothole, it's not a resurfacing, but clearly the shoulders are messed up pretty bad, and I don't know if that's something that we just give you in a separate category or what.
And those are conversations we've had internally, is that if you have a fairly narrow rural road, that, you know, to move the stripe in a little bit, you know, we may have to narrow the lane. What I see is that the stripe's right at the edge of the pavement, and that causes those issues. If you move it in a little bit, say six inches or a foot, it has a tendency to kind of create that artificial shoulder, but we definitely want to look at it. I've seen it in many areas myself.
Okay. Thank you.
Before we go into next steps, let me ask a question. Now, we talk a little bit about, a lot about South County, and I call my part of district, my, the south part of my district is south of Causeway, and 78th Street. I know I've talked about 78th Street, but there has been some land that's been sold, I understand, south of Causeway or 78th Street, that is probably going to be looking at being developed. And it's going to be a major, major, major development, I mean, major. And as you know, from Animal Drive, south to Causeway, it's, I think, four lanes, then the bottleneck's to two-lane when it gets south of Causeway. And I know we're talking about major, major, major dollars being spent there, but if we don't do something soon, that development coming in there, we're going to be up the creek without a paddle. So I just want to put that out there, because I've already talked to someone that's looking at developing affordable housing in that area, and it's going to be a lot of it in there. So we need to definitely look at that. I don't see anyone else in the queue. Next steps.
Commissioners, thank you. Bonnie does have the number on the red light camera, loss of revenue, so we'll let her report on that piece.
In fiscal year 18, the net revenue was approximately $2 million.
So with next steps, we, there are a couple of issues that I think come together for a nice conversation with you. One is the LRTP and TIP update, that I think could work well with this origin/destination study that's being done by Cutter. And then part of that, I think, is articulating also the projects that are in the 812, and how all of those are fitting together. I think as well, there was a comment to look at bonding opportunities, especially as we lay over some of the projects and look at those areas. So working with Bonnie and her folks to see how we can expedite any of those. And I also heard expediting and a hyper-program on resurfacing, particularly looking at some of the residential resurfacing. So those are the key things that we're taking away. I know also as well, talking to TECO when we widen roads to see if they can underground some of the utilities, I think as well, working with Hart, making sure that when we look at any road improvements, that we are also considering the transit piece and integrating it as well. And then as well, the 78th Street piece that you mentioned, Commissioner, I think that gets added into the list. We will then start looking at, with some of those remaining funds, the traffic shed studies on those roadways we mentioned, and we'll add 78th Street into that mix. So with that, I think that is all that we have for you today.
Commissioner Merman, you recognize?
Thank you, Mr. Chair. And I know, as Chair of Hart, is it, would it be possible, next time we have a transportation discussion, to invite the new Hart CEO to come?
The Lema?
And you introduce him to us and have him make a presentation on what his plans are? I mean, I actually get a lot of requests for bus stops out in the county, and I know there's no service, so I think this would be a good time to have that communication.
Hold on, have service.
Yeah, we can do that, no doubt. Okay, thank you.
Commissioner Overman, you recognize?
And then, in one comment associated with that is, Commissioner Merman, I remember hearing you say out loud, if, you know, if we're going to have bus service on a lot of these roads, and I get stuck behind it, I'm not going to be all that excited about it. So I think it is critically important that we wrap, you know, we wrap the dedication of our transit in with our transportation plan. And that's, I thought, I forgot what my other point was, but I do appreciate everybody working so hard on this, and look forward to the conversation on not only our impact fees and how we pay for these things, but also the financial plan along with them. But thank you.
That's it?
That's all we have, Commissioners.
Pardon?
That's all we, that's all we have, Commissioners.
Well, if that's all you have, then your turn.